Yes, with all the meeting order with pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to be in charge? I'll entertain a motion to accept the payroll claim and allowance docket in the amount of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents to move the motion on second. All in favor? Your team motion to accept the vendor claims in the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-seven cents? Yeah. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June twentieth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Motion on second. All in favor? Okay. Next item. Got some makeup work to do regarding the EMA position. Yeah.
And. First of all, I'd like to formally apologize to the commissioners. I actually had planned on having something first thing in the morning for you on Tuesday morning. But it's better roughly than my brother passed away last summer. So I'm sorry that we didn't get more. But with the advisory council and with Rachel, Justin, Justin had been included in the communications, we've been vetting some different applicants. And. It was pretty light. We had somebody, I reached out actually to the district, because you know, whenever we don't have any MA directed, and I try to act as that person, and Brad's the secondary person, but we've had a few things going lately, too. That's, you know, a little bit busier. But, you know, with that, I reached out and we did have somebody that applied, and then they rescinded their application because they got a null position. And then, you know, we kind of talked about maybe broadening the scope a little bit, not necessarily somebody that is and I might have found this a couple of times. I was always a former firefighter, formerly, so you know, things like that. And I thought, well, what about somebody in county government that's, you know, interested in learning and things like that? And actually had heard from Tori that, you know, she had some interest in it, and she's, she has experience with GIS and other things that would benefit the position. Works well with, with our group and so, but also if somebody's not directly involved in that, want to give us some time to think about it. So over the last, it's probably been six weeks. Been just feeding her some information, saying, hey, take a look at it, talk to some people, you know, trip up with some things. And so she let me know last week that she was going to accept the position, if you were willing to accept her. So I sent a message with a copy to Rachel and Justin, which Charlie happens to be your appointment to that EMA advisory council, that we would like to recommend her. Was there any, you know, remonstrance or anything? We didn't get anything back from that. So we would like to recommend Tori for the position for EMA, when she understands that the biggest part of importance is getting the EMA done, grants, and then, you know, also being able to train things down for EMA. But that the EMA part is we got caught up with Joe, fortunately, as you know, for that part of it, but now somebody needs to jump back in there, and it takes, you know, a few months to actually get all that training. She's got some EMA service that she, which, you know, you've got some, I see how the girls are, but you know, some governmental communications and command type things, but she's reviewed it all and she's interested. So we'd like to present and propose Tori.
To appoint. Tori has our. The motion on the second. All in favor? To use the new position.
And so I just wanted to logistically discuss this with you, and Eric was not here tonight, but he had brought Joe up to this office. We have, you and I have talked about this actually, about how for people doesn't own that whole over the floor, but we have an office down there. You are okay with, he wanted to stay here still? You're okay for now, whatever she decides what she wants.
I think it's a good spot for now, especially during that, I think the park board needs to sort some things out in that office anyway.
Yeah, right. Yeah, because we didn't, we didn't say they could move in there because they didn't have anything. So yeah, that's, that sounds good to you. You know, I'll, I'll work closely with her, and, you know, better tentatively, we're going to meet with Clyde Avery, who's Marshall County, and I was, I was probably too short sighted, excited thinking before that had to be somebody directly from emergency services. I talked to other people in the community that were not emergency services people, you know, at one time. So I, I think that she'll work well with, with others. She actually, she actually joined me at the fire that we had in Knox, and she was very helpful there, and you know, just to you know, kind of see what goes on in emergency incident, you know, it's a pretty decent sized one, and didn't scare her away, I don't think.
It was nice to meet. I mean, it was all sudden down, and I actually talked to some firefighters and Red Cross and exchanged numbers and stuff, so kind of got to see some scenes of what they wanted. You know, fires brought up some things that I haven't seen mentioned at least yet.
We'll talk about all of it. They don't get everything they ask for. That comes from the commissioners and the EMA advisory council, so we'll talk about that.
It was nice to be like.
But yeah, I mean, and, and, you know, you saw that we, how we, we went into command, and we're pretty good at that start kind of, we're pretty proud of that, so.
Yeah, if you have anything you need to know, I'm, we're happy to stretch the old fire marshal muscles and get back into it. Haven't done that since I got discharged, so.
Yeah, Mark's done a lot of that kind of thing, too. So yeah, if you guys are willing to help out, and it's going to be a little bit heavy lifting, you know, get past, you know, some of the things that she wouldn't have had experience in, but I've met plenty of them that didn't start out as firefighters.
Are we good as far as? Okay.
Since I'm already up here, is there something I can bring up from the council?
Sure.
It's, it's a quick thing, actually, but the council would like to request that we look at or review our policy for take home vehicles, just with the cost of fuel increasing and things like that, because it seems like the take home, since we don't have like a tax related policy, it seems like the take home vehicle are used quite a bit for personal use. As long as the commissioner's okay with that improvement, but the council would like just like to have that. Would you agree that we probably could get better at knowing where vehicles are, when they should be there? Just some things that have happened with some vehicles lately, too, like just.
Are all of the vehicles in the fleet load jacks so that we can see where they've been taken?
That's a good question. Highway Department found something that was like fifty bucks a car. Previous commissioners did not want to do that. But it was only fifty bucks a car, like it doesn't.
Yeah, fleet minutes, they have fleet minutes, they, but the board of commissioners just don't have fifty minutes on the vehicle.
But the policy, you know, other things.
I mean, if, if we're, I don't know. I mean, yeah, the policy needs to be reevaluated.
Other counties just do it to and from work. You know what I mean? And like, our vehicles are used a lot of times as second vehicles, and as long as you're okay with that, you know, there should be limitations on it, too. Who drives it, reminding people that people that are not county employees do not drive our vehicles? You know, like, there's this probably policy things that I haven't looked at the policy in a long time either. I haven't looked at it, I bet, in ten years.
Yeah, we need to.
No, that, I was going to say, that shouldn't even be a question, that non-county employees drive county vehicles. I mean, why is that even happening?
That, yeah, that shouldn't happen.
Well, where they are, at what time, and all those kind of things like that, too.
Yeah, we need to, we need to review what's, what's in writing and get what we want in writing.
Not overstepping our authority, but looking at our, we saw fuel costs are high.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have issues with some departments and their fuel.
But repairs, repairs and other damages to the vehicles are high, too. So I mean, there's extra costs that we're incurring. And then there's also insurance risk that comes with that, too. So just.
While you're visiting this, you need to visit when employees live out in county tip.
Yeah.
And what's the, what's the structure? Is it fifty miles, you know, that you take them home? Is it thirty miles I can take one home? Because recently vehicles won't be.
And then, but that's also a benefit, too, that they're not being taxed on. So technically, there's things that come into play that really, you know, other counties just cut some of that stuff just because, hey, you know, it's taxed, like, you know. There is, there is a tax implication there. So otherwise, after the budget hearings, there really wasn't anything that, I mean, you were there, obviously, so as far as that goes, that there wasn't anything else that I was supposed to bring up.
Okay. I was going to the discussion on the railroad crossing at two hundred and twenty-five south between state road twenty-three and the thousand east.
Could I have a woman to talk during this discussion, please, as?
Yes, yes, you will. But first I'll ask you, if you want, this is something you wanted specifically on.
Yeah, definitely did. Most of you are here to hear your opinion on this. Myself, at the last meeting, I was opposed to it, so and I can't really do that on my own, I mean, your input. It's pretty much, it's up to you people.
So who, just by show of hands, who all is here to make a statement on this? Okay, I'll start here and work through the gallery. So if you would, please state your name and for the record and give us your statement.
My name is John Wise. First house on the north side. Two twenty-five just passed me. Anyways. Thank any sense. For having to close across the road period. We moved, we moved, we moved there in ninety minutes. Bought the property in nineteen ninety. It just, it does not make any sense for this closure. For one thing, most of the kids in these three roads are, live on that stretch of road. I heard on the radio that we're supposed to have a gravel road. It's not gravel, it's paved from one end to the other. That's my statement.
I lived there, too.
And your name is?
Arling Wise. We live right in the middle. So, I mean, the ambulances, I've called the ambulance for him for three times. And from, it would be like, they'd have to come from twenty-three all the way around, like a circle, to get to our house. I disagree with it. I think they should just know.
Okay.
Sir, Mike Thompson. So to start off with, whose idea was this?
This was, I don't know the originator. It was brought to us by the highway superintendent. I believe it is a part of the railroad crossing elimination program spelled out in the is the infrastructure investment and jobs act published November fifteenth, the twenty twenty-one, certified in forty-nine United States Code two-two-nine-zero-nine. Okay, so it was from the railroad to the highway department to us.
I can say one thing, too, because, just so you guys aren't beating up on the commissioners, the other thing about that is I think that the way the director, the superintendent put it was that he kind of wanted to see, and Mark suggested that, that's why, and Brian, too, goes public. Then you've got a new road out of it, but then you close the road, like, you know, like, there's a balance there because there's a payoff for closing it. That's what Dan thought would be good to propose that. I think you guys were suspicious on whether people would want to do that, but that was right, that was the reason to have remonstrance about that was Dan's thought, the trade-off.
Please continue. That's not much of a trade-off, but anyway. If you don't live here, you shut that road down, then don't you guys have to make some kind of turnaround or something, the commissioner, the county, what do you do, toss a bunch of gravel there and shut the road down?
There will have to be changes made as far as the condition of the roads in the surrounding area. But I haven't been told what the, you know, no suggestions have been made to me as far as what changes would be made exactly if that crossing was, or if the road was closed at that crossing.
Yeah, can you, I mean, I've lived there my whole life, my dad had, we own all that property up to that crossing on the south north side of the road, and then we own another forty acres on the other side. And there's a, there's a lot of cars that use that cross. Believe it or not, I mean, there's a lot of traffic. They go to Culver, there's a lot of farm machinery, there's people, cattle and stuff, they haul back and forth. And then to shut that down would be totally stupid, because you're going to convert all that traffic on that dirt road. And that dirt road is not white enough, and it ditches on each side, and you got farm irrigation out there and everything, and people are going to be running off in the Mike Reiser fields and stuff, and and you come with another car down that dirt road, you got to get over. And then if you guys think you can paint it, you're nuts, because it's not white enough, and it's not going to handle all the farm machinery and stuff. So.
I'm sorry.
But I'm talking about my dad, too. He's got dementia. I talked to him about it. He couldn't come here, but he's totally against it, too, so. Me, it does not make any sense at all to shut that process. Yeah. So I was speaking on his app, too.
Hello, I'm John Chedrow. I live a little farther down the road from the Wises. I'm just trying to figure out what the county is getting out of this. Why, why is a county listening to the railroad here? I, I don't understand that. You know, you're just going to tick off a bunch of people that live in the area and that live outside the area, because whenever the railroad car crosses twenty-three, I've got a parade of cars coming by my house. You know, that's the road they use to go around. That's kind of the bypass. Same way with when the Yellow River was, bridge was closed this spring. Same thing, they're all using my road to get around to go to Plymouth. I just don't, I don't understand it why it's even, even up for thought, really, you know?
That's all I got.
My name is Anthony Garland. I live in two places. One on the other side of the tracks, one on the opposite side. Like the lady was saying, you get fire trucks there, or anything, you're going to head maybe two to three minutes. Two, three minutes means a lot, especially ambulance, any of that stuff. Plus, I take hay down. I got cattle, I got ten hundred cattle in two places. So you're telling me I got to go down twenty-three either way to take hay there, so that's endangering me worse than taking a back road where maybe ten cars compared to thirty cars. It doesn't make any sense to close every day.
I'm Steve Garland. I grew up next door to where I live. And I travel up and feed his cattle. And it don't make no sense for me to go around take that gravel road to go up and feed them and water them, you know? I just think it's crazy. That's all I got to say.
Sir. Brett Reisner. We got property on both sides of the tracks. Most of my questions been answered here, but we are against it. I can't see why they would want to close it. The railroad has their crossings and it's set up. It would just cost the county more money. And what, what would the county get out of it? For closing?
I haven't gotten that information yet. And that's why we're here, trying to get all the information we can, so we can make a decision, the right decision on this.
Yeah.
Before you have that decision, you're going to have another meeting on the thing, correct? Let us know what you guys are going to get out of it. Does that mean them answers should be, you should know them answers by now?
I mean, I would like to know more about why they, why we got the request in the first place. I mean, I got.
They should know that. You guys should know that.
Right, and that's why we didn't make a decision when it was presented to us. That's why we're asking all of you for your input, so that we make the correct decision.
It's a nationwide plan. I mean, a lot of people have done it for a trade-off for improvements. I mean, nobody tried to set up, so, nobody made a stupid suggestion. It was a suggestion.
I know what the letter said, that's what.
Right, that, well, that's why the commissioners did it, because that's all.
I understand, but they should know what they're getting out of it before they write a letter.
For the railroad?
Shut the railroad down, the crossing down. They're going to get a trade-off, ain't they?
The railroad made the proposal to the county, and now the county's proposing to you what your thoughts are.
I know, but what's the railroad offering them to shut it down?
Sixty thousand dollars.
How much?
Sixty thousand dollars.
Why couldn't you tell me that before?
Which would go forward, pay me the road.
That ain't nothing.
I mean, that.
Upkeep and all that.
The railroad would pay like fifty-three thousand of it, and the state of Indiana would pay about seven thousand.
Somebody needs to wake up.
That's what they're offering the commissioners, the commissioners wanted to get your input on.
So you think sixty thousand dollars are going to pay to pave that back road?
And why the maintenance?
That, that is just what the superintendent presented at the last meeting.
Right.
And how they do it.
Let's. I, I want to get, I want to hear from everybody before we move on. Do you have anything you'd like to say, ma'am?
My name's Eldana Reisner. I do a lot of running in that area on the Gopher. And I kind of avoid two hundred south because of the dirt. And it's not wide enough for me if I have to park to wait for somebody, I go around two twenty-five. Just to get to them. It'd be inconvenient.
Sir, you, you definitely wanted to make sure you spoke, so.
Well, friends, I live within a mile of the crossing, lived there for fifty years. I don't have a particular opinion one way or another. I just have some thoughts on the matter. And maybe I can give you a little bit of railroad philosophy and thought, why it has come at this point. Like you said, the railroad industry is interested in eliminating as many grade crossings as possible for reasons of safety. It not only costs them money day after day to maintain gates or flashers. It costs extra to maintain the track through a grade crossing like this, the railroad's portion of it. And if there is a collision where someone goes around the gates, the railroad's almost always sued and incurred a lot of legal expense. Under the main idea of safety, preventing collisions between motor vehicles and trains, it's been railroad philosophy for years to try and eliminate as many highway crossings as possible. And this is what's behind it. I'm well familiar with Norfolk Southern. In fact, sixty years ago, I even worked for it for four summers. But what I've seen is about every ten years, they come up with a revisiting this question. About twenty years ago, they proposed and were successful in closing Division Road just west of Knox City limits. And that, if this were to go through, this is what you would see two twenty-five south looking like. Paved roads right up to the railroad crossing and a cul-de-sac, a circle turn, and then barricades blocking the railroad right of way from the highway. That's what I would imagine would, would occur if this were to be carried out. Division, that particular road had very little traffic to begin with, very few people on it at all, much less than the people here. That got carried out successfully. Ten years later, about ten years ago, the railroad came up with a proposal more through Knox City. They wanted to eliminate the Williams Street Railroad crossings and the Bauer Street Railroad crossing. And the public expressed interest in maintaining that sufficient that the mayor at the time recommended to the railroad that they not close it, and that's why those two crossings are open to this date. I think the railroad has not got any major agenda against our county or Washington Township in particular. They're just looking at overall lessening of expense at the well-being of the residents who would be affected by living along this. In general, I would say if the majority of the residents along this road are against it, let alone those who use it regularly, that's trying to hard to argue out of. The railroad will pay money, will throw a bit of money, say sixty thousand dollars at it. Remember, this is just a one-time only thing. There's no maintenance covered, of course, it never has been. Railroad still pays. Railroad still pays taxes each year. Uh, the, uh. Here's where if you choose to, to go decide to recommend to the railroad that they be allowed to close that crossing. Uh, you need to get as much money as you can from them, and here's where some negotiation can be carried out. Uh, such as paving one piece of road or another, I'm not gonna get into that detail. Uh, I'm looking about three quarters of a mile, half a mile on the. Two hundred south, it's gravel, but that can be converted to paved road and another quarter mile on nine hundred east. Or one thousand east, uh, that can be converted to paved road. Certainly, if you decide to negotiate with railroad. Determine what your costs are of paving those roads, at least maybe even paving the residual of two twenty-five south. But uh, this is your choice. And uh, just from my common sense, seeing uh, the, looks like hundred percent of the residents along this road are against it. Uh, becomes kind of difficult to agree with the railroad. Uh, they're, they're doing it in a good natured fashion for safety, ultimately to save them some expense. But if you choose to, to negotiate with them, uh, you might be able to get more of their original offer out of it. In exchange for having a proposal of what it's gonna cost you to pave this amount of road as a one-time only thing. Again, that's all I have to say, a recommendation one way or another, other than uh, in politics, you usually. Listen to your constituents.
Do you have anything on a specific matter or something else?
Okay.
I've got property on. Charlie Goldber about once, we, we have made awful inconvenience for people that live on that road. If you have to get a fire truck in there or an ambulance. That's.
Before I sent out the letters that was against it, I, I could read a statement, it's a couple paragraphs, his name's Jacob Joseph. I think he worked for Norfolk Southern, it looks like, for a while, I can read it if you want, he's just.
What's the general sentiment of the?
Um, well, it's kind of a long general sentiment, I'll, I'll read it quick. Uh, Mr. Schramm, Stark County Commissioner, Stark County Council, Cetera, citizens, Stark County, former employee of Norfolk Southern Railroad. Where I was employed as a communication signal supervisor for a tenure before resigning October twenty twenty, I harbor a level towards NS Norfolk Southern. Been enjoying my time there, I'm comfortable lifestyle for my family, provides the address, which is the Culver address. Um, so despite the address, I live in Washington Township, area responsibility, including all crossings, wayside devices, wayside signals, all communications infrastructure from Fort Wayne. To the terminus of Norfolk Southern B line in Chicago. It isn't that I have a great deal of concern with the wanted to close a winded east crossing by issues the price to do so. It may or may not inform the county of their ultimate intentions with that area of crossing in particular. There is a project that is or was called a long train project. As part of that project, Norfolk Southern intends to build several siding tracks in excess of twelve thousand. Says feet there, about, that's meant to be miles, to accommodate longer and heavier trains, probably be between Chicago and points east. Handle those types of trains along the B line. They intend or intended to build one of those sightings near State Road twenty-three back towards County Road eleven fifty and on in Marshall County. The AS room. I feel like the farmers and locals that use County Road two twenty-five would argue that fifty-two thousand dollars is not going to offset their headaches. Going around the crossings or encouraging them to use other crossings at visit your roads. Where we would see more impacts from farm traffic and more opportunities for crossing incidents to take place. Al- also, this newly created siding is going to turn several of the crossings into two-track crossings. Where the more the intent of a passing siding is a place to park, one train will, another train goes around it. Essence, anytime there's a train parked in this new siding, there could be, will be several other adjacent crossings, possibly blocked and possibly blocked for hours. The state of Indiana repeatedly cited a federal law stating that the trains can sit as long as they need to and if fined levy. By the state or local governments on the railroad or no avoid, ask the people to jam it about it. If you first, if you want firsthand accounts of what can go wrong when crossings are blocked for an extended period, you'll ask the people in Baroque what happened. State Road seventeen is blocked for hours, ask them about their neighbors who, their neighbor who lost an arm in a farming incident. State Route seventeen, several of the crossings were blocked and first responders were simply laying rendering aid. I think her arm, I think her arm or my neighbor's arm is worth more than fifty-two thousand dollars. I think we should ask NS for a much larger sum of other types of grants or fundings for mutually beneficial projects like railroad safety education. Railroad hazmat safety training for our first responders. Because this project will create more opportunities for hazardous materials to travel through and possibly stop and leave in our county. Or grants to the Hoosier Valley Railroad. They intend to go forward with the project, including closing State Route two twenty-five crossings, crafty to find a way to build an average or a low-grade crossing at County Road eleven fifty. So there will be a way for first responders to get to the other side of a parked train. Due to my work schedule, I'm unable to attend commissioners meeting, appropriate pass along the information.
Did get uh communication from leadership at Washington Township Fire Department to their opposition. Would like to postpone the formal decision until Danny's in front of us, since he's the one that came before us, I'd like to, to be here, so we can tell him no to his face.
I definitely will say no.
Okay.
Thank all of you for showing up.
Yes, appreciate all of your input. Thank you. Yes, I'll entertain watching this table this until our next meeting. Motion second, all in favor. It is July eighteenth at nine thirty in the morning in this very room.
Is that weekday?
Yes, it's a Monday.
I just have a couple of comments and a question about the easement at Bass Lake or Western Avenue.
Just, just for the record, restate your name.
I'm sorry. We went to, my neighbors and I came to the last two meetings. And at the first one, you had indicated that by July fourth, you would have a decision to. You as a commissioner for Stark County to survey just the land at our easement. And then you weren't trying to do anything with the water, and I just wanna make sure that it's correct, that DNR is going to do the water.
That's their responsibility.
Okay, and yours is going to be the land. So has the surveyor.
The surveyor has been facing some personal issues, we are a bit delayed.
Okay.
Um, but we fully intend to have that information as soon as it is possible.
Okay, um, last meeting I wasn't here, but Melissa Schwab was, was my neighbor. And she talked to Bill Crass, that's the surveyor.
Yes.
Okay, um, he was going to get her a phone number for the director of the DNR, because we can't get like the. Officers to come out and actually do anything. So, uh, she's not heard from him, is there a way she, she or I could get ahold of him and get this number from him?
I don't have his office number memorized, but he does, he does have an office number here.
Is it online?
Five seven four seven seven two nine one three five is his office.
Someone there would be able to give us that phone number.
Someone should be able to direct you and write it.
Okay, and do you know if when they do the survey, will they put signs and fences up or just the sign?
At this point, I believe, um, we're gonna just, I'm just going to recommend signs. Um, and go from there.
Okay.
And try to, if we need to go beyond that. We'll, we'll explore that in future, hopefully, just the signs will work, you know, that's, that would be the most cost efficient solution.
Yes.
So that's what we're gonna try first.
And the person on uh, the west side is building his house and, you know, his, the land is all tore up there, so. It's kind of hard to delineate where the easement is on his end, other than, you know, I've lived there for ten years and know where it is. Okay, that was all I.
Just as a heads up, just because I'm coordinating with a lot of surveyors on the private end of things that I deal with.
Okay.
And they are anywhere from six to eight months out in terms of the formal survey. From territory, he's probably six months out and exorbitantly expensive. Um, I mean, you're talking about a survey like that, even for a small swath, you're not getting less than two, three, sometimes four thousand dollars, so. I mean, just to give you an idea, so if you think, uh, you know, it's October, why isn't it anything but the surveyors are.
And it's probably gonna be the, the major delay going forward, as far as I think.
The county paying for that for us, since that land is yours.
Not the way, no, not.
Well, thank you, we avoided everyone up there, so we've been all getting along, because you just don't go up there. We found other places to get in the lake, unfortunately.
It's going to take more time than we want it to, but we will get a result.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I've come to stop, John Collage, lived in uh, one zero one five, he's serving himself. Seven years ago, I had an issue. Some inmates on my property, they were working for sheriff's, I'm sorry, for the highway department. And I got a call at work from my wife, she said, there's people cutting this tree down on our property. Urinating in the yard. I went down and spoke with the supervisor of highway department at that time. And he said, well, you know, we have a right of way to come off trees, so I said, my tree is so far back, that there's no off. My tree doesn't block and travel, I live in a T. My tree is offset from cars coming south on one hundred and it's not extending over the road at all. For all traffic on seven hundred east and west, he said, one zero one five, seven hundred south. He came out, took a look at it, called me back and said, I apologize. It's okay, that's, you know, don't do it again, tree finally grew back. I wake up this morning to the sound of grinding, three people from the county cutting my tree again. I went down and thought, I said, what the hell are you doing with my property? Well, our boss told us to come down and trim this tree, do you like it? Can you see better coming out of driveway now? And I said, are you seriously that stupid? Seriously? I said, no trespass, no trespassing signs, right next to the tree and on the opposite side of my driveway. I said, what was it blocking? What was it doing? We don't know, we were just told to come. Today, this morning, yeah, it was around eight AM, between eight and nine. And uh. It's disheartening. This tree is set back, okay, there's a fifteen foot from the center of the road, uh, which, you know, highway department worries about anything blocking anything. This, this tree is, I don't know, eighteen feet from the center of the road, it's eight feet from the edge of, you know, the edge of the street. Nothing blocking, but now the whole underside of the tree is gone, we use this the, for two reasons, one, you got cars coming down. East one hundred, they've come through my yard before, just missed my garage, I mean, they came all the way through, I'm set back a hundred and eighty feet off of the road. I mean, they came up to my house at a U-turn and came back down my driveway, okay? I had another uh kid, went to the neighbor kid, came around that turn, didn't stop it, stopped, so I came through my yard and took out two trees. So, this tree helps to protect my property, but I also like it to be for privacy. So I, I don't know what to do, how do I stop these people from the highway department from coming on my property, I mean, do I have to lodge a lawsuit of some sort? Gee, I mean, when was the first tree cut down?
He said it was.
Summer of twenty fifteen. I, I don't wanna do that.
No, this is, this, this sounds like one of those things that should have been passed along. Um, from an old supervisor to a new supervisor, just didn't.
But there's also the point that if they're willing to come on my property, why wouldn't they come up and knock on the door? Earlier this year, it was in late spring, I was standing in my house inside, now remember, I'm a hundred eighty feet off the road, you can't see in my house. I'm standing there, not fully clothed. And I just happened to look out my front window, and here comes uh, two people walking across my front porch. I don't know what that, what is this? And they don't have any kind of things on, they had vests on, they did have that, no, you know, nips go. I went up in front of them too, they're walking around the back of my house, across my decks and everything, we're, we're checking for gas leaks. So, uh, I said, well, my gas leak was right in front of the house. Number two, why wouldn't you stop at my door, not between what you're doing, you get shot this way, you understand that? Okay, so, and you know me, I have certain issues.
Yes.
So, and I don't wanna do that, I'm my own business here, what do I do with these guys? They, that, you know what, they also took out a plant, and I don't know why, there's a, a sign right. On the opposite side of that intersection has arrows pointing left and right, so people all come through my yard. And uh, there was a plant growing there too, and it's gone, I don't know what happened there, but it was there yesterday. So actually, it was there last night, so it's not there this morning.
All right, well, this is a topic that the session we have with the highway superintendent.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're, we're having our annual meeting on Saturday, and we had talked about possibly being able to, speakers still available.
I'm planning to be there, yeah.
Okay, nine fifteen.
Actually, as you, as you can see, I'm not in chilling, you would ask me about that, I, I can come out to what time it is.
Nine fifteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, the meeting starts at nine.
Even with everything else?
Yeah.
It's our annual meeting, so there'll be an election, the meeting starts at nine, there'll be an, an opening, and then the candidates speak, and then. Guest speakers will be able to speak after that, and then, once you guys are probably on it, obviously, it's the same to the rest of the meeting, but. Bestly.
Okay, that's right. Address the easement around or any problems?
Well, any, any question that anyone wants to raise can be raised during that meeting.
I think I do better here.
Nothing?
Nothing.
You're happy with the way things are? Anything from?